This Harris County Board of Commissioners made an order on March 1st of 2022. And Commissioner Langston would be the lead in our education system.
Please join me, Brian. I'm here with my father, we're grateful today for the many license that you have bestowed upon us. We're thankful, Lord, that we can live in a county such as we do. And, Lord, we're going to ask your blessings, continue your blessings on this county, and those who serve it, and our residents. Lord, please provide a hedge of protection around our public safety officers. And, Lord, continue to bless each and every one who's here. All of these things we ask of Thamain. Amen.
Good place to join us for the Blood War.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great and just law.
All right, the first item on our agenda this evening, all the approval of our minutes from our regular session of February 15th of 2022, is there a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the notice.
On second.
We've got a motion on a second day of further discussion. And all those in favor? Motion to approve. Nancy, is there interference or assistance?
No, sir.
The next item on our agenda this evening is under Old Business, and this was an agreement with GDOT lighting for US 27 and State Route 315. GDOT is preparing to approve the US 27 and State Route 315 intersection. By constructing the roundabout, this project is part of a larger US 27 widening project that will be under construction during the spring of 2023 and be completed during late 2026. We had a little discussion at our last meeting, then we received some information from GDOT. Are there any questions?
I know, but I did stay at the last meeting. I wasn't sure if they had lights around the roundabout outside of Greenville at Harris City. And I went through there the other week for a soccer game, and they do have two lights over there. I don't think they're the total lights you're talking about here, but they do have lights around that roundabout there.
And my biggest concern was that I wasn't really a fan of streetlights. However, from GDOT's perspective, it's a safety concern. So with that being said, if there's no further discussion, I would make the motion to approve the agreement. And I'll say, we have a motion on second, any further discussion? And all those in favor? Motion here is. The third item on our agenda this evening is a decision regarding the rezoning applications of Edgar Houston Building Incorporated. There was a combined public hearing regarding the two applications for Edgar Houston Builder, Inc. to rezone to adjoining properties for development. This was held January 4th of 2022 before the Board of Commissioners. The public hearing was held enclosed during the meeting of the Board, with action being to table this meeting upon motions by Commissioner Langston, and seconded by Commissioner Andrews and Commissioner Irons, respectively, in passing unanimously. Because the public hearing was held enclosed, no further comments can be received regarding these rezoning applications, although the Board may ask questions of the applicant. Are there any questions from the Board for the applicant?
I'd like to ask if there were any changes that might have...
I'm sorry, Mr. Langston, what was...
What did you... the changes, any changes?
No, ma'am, we did not make any changes. We had a couple of studies done. We have an archaeological study now to address a concern with the cemetery. It was brought up. We did an economic and fiscal impact study. We could provide the layout to, you know, that I actually sent you guys to think of the kind of the impact this would have on the community, both from the perspective of our proposed layout versus the negative, minus 24 lots.
And I received your email earlier, but trying to look at the location from the, I guess that lot would be closest to Mulberry Creek. What was that distance again?
So this lot here, you have 250 feet from the creek to the lot there, to the back of the house, or where was it, back of the house there? And it's kind of addressed the concern that was put forward about protection of the creek. We went ahead and notated this, sent out to you guys, the distance from the creek to the closest cul-de-sac, which is 430 feet.
And could you tell me the other numbers, like on the southern side, southwestern corner?
Southwestern corner, 720 feet from the creek to there. Yeah, 435 to the back of this pad. 510 feet from the creek here to the cul-de-sac at lot between lot 28, 29. 370 feet to the back of the house pad. Over here, as you're getting back towards the north, you have 1,000 feet to the back of this lot. And the closest here, you have 600 feet even to the cul-de-sac, 420 feet to the house. Go to 650 feet to the cul-de-sac, 400 feet to the house there. The closest that we would get disturbing, or to the creek there, would be 430 feet for the cul-de-sac to put the roads in.
And what was the price point on the acreage or shooting days?
So we'll be anywhere from about, by the time we get there, we'll probably be 390 to 450. Our average price point right now is $409,000. The average resale price point in Harris County is 310.
Okay, and how many lots are over 2 acres?
All of the lots are over 2 acres. Every single home site is over 2 acres. We have 26 homesites that are between 3 and 21 acres.
All right, and there were some concerns about the cemetery, and we received the archaeology study on the cemetery.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We got in touch with Southern Research out of Pine Mountain. Dean Wood and his guys spent about a week and a half on site. They were able to locate, you know, most, all the graves, actually, very easily. They were all kind of within a little, a smaller area. They were just worried that there might be some graves in the right of way. So they actually called in some equipment, scraped off, I don't know, 3 or 4 inches of topsoil, looking for intentions in the ground, and didn't find any grave, or grave sites, outside of where they originally looked at.
Where is that cemetery?
It is right here. Well, lot 53, well, it's not actually lot 53, but it's located there.
What are your plans for that lot 53 with the cemetery on it? Y'all just gonna leave it as a lot that has a cemetery? Or y'all gonna try to...
So that's in... I'm sorry.
No, or are you gonna try to cordon off that area and then do the other part? I'm just curious what the plans were for that.
Once we get there and have a better idea of what that's going to look like, once we get into the lots and the topography, we're going to see how we need to grade that out. We'll make a better decision then. Right now, the plan would be to cordon that off and disclose that to any of our advising property. But it would be, there would remain easement for anybody who wanted to go to the cemetery. There's a fellow, David Mitchell. It's actually his family cemetery, and he does some research out there. I'm going to talk with him, and he's, we got some contact with Southern Research, and they had some conversations.
So you would make sure they had easement to go in?
Absolutely.
Keep the cemetery up?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
When you're working on a subdivision like this, who sets the guidelines, call them silver fences, erosion controls? Is that set by the state, by your engineers?
Our engineers have a set of rules they go by, and our engineer's here. He, I'm pretty sure, take a manual, that everybody kind of looks at, but he follows those guidelines.
And I know that you're trying to have this rezoned. Originally, it's A1, correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So y'all could do what you want to do here and not have a rezon, but you want to go to R1, is that what I think, R1?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
What is the purpose for not leaving it A1 and coming to R1, since most of the lots are 3 acres or more, or whatever they are?
Yes, sir. The purpose of that is, it was kind of suggested to us that if we went A1, it would cause some problems with livestock. You know, A1 would allow for livestock to be in the neighborhood. And it was, it was a concern that the HOA at some point may be not happy with the livestock of some folks, and they didn't, they just felt like it would be easier to go to R1. They would restrict that.
Any other questions from the Board? Just a few things that I looked into, seeing I thought they planned for us or she taxed us. And the price point on the home in Harris County, for the cost of that home, the tax base off of that home to offset the cost of services provided at that home, 30 years ago, it was $320,000. So with low inflation, you know, we're more than that today. But your price points for these homes take us well above that price point where the county is not going to the hole and trying to provide services to these homes.
Yes, sir.
And I know last time, there's a lot of concern from citizens, still the school system. So I've reached out and talked with the school system. The school system has no major concerns over the current development going on in this area. If y'all like to talk to the school system yourself, feel free to reach out to them. I've also been working with the school system closely and looking at the future for Harris County and the plans that they have and the projects that they're looking into for the near future in Harris County. And those are some good plans. You know, there's also talk of traffic on the roads. And, you know, it's more traffic than we're used to in Harris County. There would be additional traffic. But if you go and if you pull up the car allowances per hour on a rural road, we are, if you look at the traffic counts, traffic studies, we are nowhere near those numbers with these roads to handle. It might slow us down. It's not what we're used to. It would be, you know, definitely, it's going to slow us down. It's not what we like. But it is, it meets the limits of what is expected by GDOT, to not put that road as a failing road. You know, we've also talked about the rate of growth in Harris County. And I went back and pulled all the numbers back to, from 1987 up through current. And, you know, starting back in 1992, we were building 322 homes a year in Harris County. And that number grew to 449 homes in 2005. And then slowed down to 252 in 2007 when we went through recession. And this past year, in 2021, we jumped back up to 242 homes. So we're still building at a much slower pace, you know, than what's been going on in Harris County for years. And then with the numbers you gave me, I also went on Q Public and pulled all the information from homes, basically from Highway 27, where Mulberry Creek goes under 27 all the way down to get Mulberry Falls. And those homes in that area, some of them are closer than 200 feet to Mulberry Creek. If you get down towards Plantation Creek, their distances from those homes to the creek, to the center line of the creek, all the way, is basically the same distances that you have now. I mean, other than your 250 feet. Most of those homes are in the 400, 500 range. So, hey, you know, there's just some things I would like to do. I don't know if there's any other comments from the, from the Board. I mean, we've seen the, the studies that were done. I don't know if anybody else has any other comments that they'd like to make.
I'm calling it. No, when we look at our comprehensive plan, it states in there that we would expect, and it certainly has happened, that the residential growth in this area would be along the 315 corridor. This, however, is not along the 315 corridor, it's on Mountain Hill School Road, which is, even though there are some subdivisions on that road, when you ride down that road, you still have a very rural kind of feel. Have this large agricultural land that's been agricultural for a very long time. And the only question to me that we have to answer here tonight is, do we hold this large tract of land on a county road that has been agricultural for decades and generations to be rezoned to dense residential? That's the question for us tonight. And when I ride down that road and I think about that particular property, where it's located, what's surrounding it, that it's not on that 315 corridor that we proposed in our plan to develop more densely, then I just can't in good conscience say, yes, I prefer that that large tract of agricultural land be changed from agriculture to residential. I know that you can develop it as agriculture based on the current UDC. But I also can't forget that we have spent well over a year and a half working on a new UDC that's going to come before this Board in just a few weeks, which changes a lot, and I know you're under the old, about what we've discussed and reached consensus about what we want agricultural land to look like in the future. So for those reasons, I can't support the changing of the zoning.
I was just gonna, I was gonna ask, what, so it's my understanding that with the future of the Inuse now, the 315 corridor we encompassed about 5 miles north and about 5 miles south of that corridor, that's kind of what they were considering corridor. And we're 3 miles from 315 there, and we've all gone with it. Fair enough, but I understand. I just, you know, if I also may ask a question, what we're saying, we're density, we're dense, what do we mean there? Because this, this to me is not a high-density neighborhood. Density would mean that you were somewhere 4, 4 units to the acre.
Not in Harris County. Well, that's not how we find density.
It's that, it's that helps the code, is my question.
Well, the thing about it is, you're, when we're looking at our new UDC, again, I know you're under the old UDC as you come here, we're looking at agricultural land not being able to be divided except into 10 lots to try to maintain that rule. And so if you develop it under agriculture, people have some chickens in the outer path. You can't, if you got 3-acre lot, you can't sustain cow much. We have cows, obviously, we have cows. But, you know, dense, to me, that's dense.
You know, I could, I could look at something like that. You know, I mean, I lived in rural part of Harris County. That's why I moved to the area of Harris County that I did. I looked at our comp plan. I knew where the growth was going to be focused. I didn't want to be around that area. So, you know, I'm moving. You know, what I prefer. But if we look at this, this also is what the citizens of Harris County voted for. You know, voted for and requested, hasn't been on lot size and then well beyond that lot size.
Yeah, that's true, in the past. And we hear the outcry for stop, slow, stop, slow, make it less dense, less dense. And so knowing that, you know, we've worked on the UDC to change that, it's just kind of, to me, it's poor timing. You can't help it, we can't help it. You know, I wish we had just said, okay, let's don't do anything until we get the new UDC, because that's the new thinking. So I can't help it, no. What we've worked on, and yet here we sit with this in front of us. So again, the question for each of us that we each have to consider is, do we own a large piece of agricultural land on this particular area to be rezoned residential? That's the question for us. And I'm sure we each have our own thinking about it.
May I make one comment or a question almost? Since we're talking about UDC in the code, and I'm not 100% familiar with the new code, but I'm pretty familiar with the current code. That current code does not reflect a 2-acre middle outside of the flood plain. And that was conditioned as a planning commission added this. And, you know, we have followed all the rules and gone above and beyond those rules and done what we felt like Harris County wanted, not just the Harris County administration, but Harris County residents. And we obviously feel like it's very unfair to enforce something on us that's not even the code.
I understand that. That's why I say it's just poor. It creates cognitive dissonance for me.
Yes, ma'am.
Just do the right thing. I've heard, if y'all could please talk to comments afterwards. We'd be glad to talk to you after the meeting. Just please be respectful. I did agree that our, that must be the thing, I mean, UDC that will change and, you know, definitely impact the future of building in Harris County. Also don't think, you know, even though it's coming up, you know, next month at our meeting, I think it is next month, but, I mean, I still don't think we're quite ready to pass that. I think there's still a lot of small adjustments to be made. And I don't think it's fair to try to enforce any thing that might be in that new UDC on the possible level.
That's why I said, you just have to decide each of us on this piece of property in that location, changing the zone. Do we, go to our conscience?
So, you know, I've got a couple, you know, comments just to kind of go back. And to me, density in itself is, you know, it's not just one singular development that I think I've reached this point last time. And it's really a whole list that we've got to stand back and look at this and say, hey, look. And looking at the numbers over the past, if you do go back, you know, go back over from 1992 to 300, where it goes from 91 to 92, transition from 177 to 322. And that, that pattern actually completes itself around about 2006, right pretty toward the housing market, you know, pretty much exploded. So to me, large capacity or large growth in itself within a 1-mile radius of the same essentialized location. The county itself has already had, in front of it, already approved 2,200 homes in white. There's about 3 others that have 100 homes in that, which is under, that's 25 hundred units. And then on top of that, you've got another one that you're considering, that we're looking at another 100 homes. So it, and I'll totally look at 2,600 now. The argument is, is one of those developments is a 30-year development, but that 30-year development, not fairness as part of the commercial construction. Same family homes and the partisan anything else that we see growing up now are going to go up a lot, a lot sooner than 30 years. So kind of going back to the thing, saying, you know, this isn't what we're, you know, what we're used to. You know, it's not. But we don't move to Harris County to, you know, have any other way of life, you know, kind of thrown into us. That's why a lot of people move here. That's why I moved my family back here. And it's, it's the concept of not wanting to be in a high-density, high-traffic area that no, we're not used to. And, you know, I know other commissioners got calls. They got calls all day. I did, I got blown up all day. And it was to the point to where, you know, other commissioners tell you, listen, our children's is the joint site, they put you here, they voted you. So it's hard to sit there and look at that. And just because an application, the check boxes have been checked off on application to come to front of us for consideration, that's just one part of the question. The whole equation is, what is this impact to the community? What is this impact to services? What is this overall to what? We're really, as a majority, from Harris County citizen, you know, standpoint, taxpayer standpoint, what do they want Harris County to look like? So it's hard to fight that when you're getting those calls. You're seeing this on a daily basis. And then two, you know, just because it's within acceptable limit within a criteria, doesn't mean that that criteria is acceptable in every aspect or every application. It's all, to me, an individual-based space. So to me, you know, it's hard for me to sit here and look at this and, and with everything else going on and not know, I don't know that number. I still haven't got a number of what's going to cost us from an impact on a services level from what has already been passed within this radius. And I've heard people say that, you know, we're trying to stifle growth or we're trying to stifle, you know, somebody's way of life when it comes to real estate. But, I mean, if you look at it, there's 2,500 units that's already been approved. And if we go back, you can take 6 years here to equal out what's already been approved just in a year, year and a half. So the numbers are, they don't, they don't balance each other. So to me, you know, you know, my concern is the schools. I mean, I know they say, the schools say they can accept it. I do have to go on the board. And I do have more reservations, but that's personal. I have to table that filling out. But, you know, going into portable buildings for our kids, you know, my, my, if I don't want her to go in, I'm not going to let somebody else's kid. And, but I can't speak to that. It's not, it's, again, I digress. It's, it's the school. My issue of it is, is the main thing I hear. And all the calls I got today was, you know, this isn't the Harris County that we knew. Never this is the Harris County that we're used to. It's all relative to everybody. I get it. And development's coming, we're not stopping development. We've got to have development, or one, your taxes are going to go through because inflation year over year, month over month, are about 7%. So you've got to look at that service aspect, too. That service cost is, it's inflating every month. So when it comes to do, and the new residents come here, there's other services that are going to come to us and expect to us to go up on our budget with no say so what's going to be the cost. And it's just, it's hard for me not to know what that total cost is going to be and why. I'm going to have to go to my neighbor. After, if this was approved, you know, to be able to rezon, looking at my neighbor, I say, well, potentially, your, you know, property taxes may go up with a new income. It's, to me, there's more variables than just, like and why, does this match, you know, the criteria of, but on application. I think it's, I think it's a wider scope than that. And that, that's just my personal thoughts on that, and everybody that I've heard on the phone today.
Mayor, so, so I want to ask, are we looking at it from a general bird's eye view and looking at it from 26-ish lots that are planned to go in the area that Harris County has deemed the appropriate area for it to go in, that 315 corridor? Or we're looking at it as an individual neighborhood? Right? Because we talked about both directions. Going from the general bird's eye view, right, 96 lots, to the high density that has been approved over the next several years. Now, I know there's been a lot of talk about having commercial space come into town, and know that we've frankly had conversations with folks in the commercial business. They won't come here without the higher density. This does help with that. Obviously, not as much as, as the road that we referred to. But you mentioned that the Harris County that we all know, right? This is the Harris County that we all know. I mean, you have 2 plus acre lives with 26 of those being from 3 to 21 acres. So if you're looking at the individual neighborhood, it absolutely is what Harris County is asking for.
Individual. I would agree, individually. But this is 2,600 homes that we're looking at. That's not what Harris County is seeing. And even historically, going over these numbers, year over year, you're looking at 359 on average, on average on year, you're looking at about 340 on average. So that's, that's a huge difference between those numbers. And, and to me, the Harris County that I'm hearing and that I see and that I know is a rural area to where you don't have that high traffic. You don't have the burden of the crime that comes with that, that traffic coming in. And two, to be honest with you, my responsibility and who I'm holding to is who's already here.
Maybe more people are going to move into Harris County.
But they're not here yet. So I have to behold to the wishes of all my constituents, every one of us.
I, I do want to ask a question. When you say crime, bringing crime in, what do you, what do you mean by that?
Statistically across the nation, if you look at it, the higher density or higher population count, the more statistical crime that you have.
And I don't disagree with that, I don't, I didn't approve the rural neighborhood. We're not part of the rural neighborhood.
I'm not talking about that at all.
Well, when you speak of high density. Defined across the nation, higher density is not this year. Higher density is going to be when you get 3-plus units to the acre.
But that's relative, that's relative of what that development is in, what county is in. Where does that develop? Look at Harris County, that's not a standard, that wasn't a standard.
And I agree with you on that, and it wasn't a standard for a reason. Because you guys want to keep it that way, and I support that. That's why we're playing ball this way. But higher density, I won't disagree that it does bring crime. This right here does not bring crime.
We don't have the numbers yet. And we don't know what that support ratio is going to be.
They do. I have a lot of faith in your share of office.
I'm not just talking about shares office, I'm talking about every other service that we have. Trash pickup, run-ins, parks, everything is, is mainly just one part. Trash pickup, rodents, parks, everything. It's not only just one part.
Bobby, you mentioned your phone's been blowing up today. This happens to be just down the road from where I live in the district. I had five emails since you broke them up.
Well, I wish I had let you have my phone.
I'm sorry.
I said, I wish I'd let you have my phone.
Well, anyway, but when you were referring to, and I may have misunderstood you, 2,500 homes have been approved.
2,500 units. But I said units. So you got 2,500 units. So you got 2,200 just in one development I think, and I think you got three other that has 100.
The 2,200 years speaking is the growth?
Yes.
Okay, those were approved.
In 2008, yes, with a high estimate of about 14.
Over a 20 to 30-year build.
30-year build, I think, is kind of misleading because 30 years in itself is not just the single-family homes, which I think I'll do it to. It's not single-family homes or apartments.
Well, I don't think we can sit here and second-guess the professionals in the mountains. I don't think that I can do that.
Second-guessing them. I'm talking about total.
What they're building.
I'm talking about total development. Total development in itself as a whole, this is completion of a project. Given in my terms, from a network engineering perspective, which is doing multi-million other projects, the culmination of that project's not finished until the last article of that project is completed, which includes the commercial base. Would you agree?
Oh, it's completed?
Yes. So 30 years of these. When he consensus of that whole project is completed? That would be a 30-year project. And I do, I do.
I'm not going to argue with Bobby.
I'm not arguing. I'm just asking you, do you agree with that?
I'm not going to argue with you. We're 10 years into that 20 to 30-year. Just because they didn't spark.
14, no, 14 years. Yep, definitely.
And you, you know, we say that we moved here, which, you know, my family's been here forever. We moved here because of the ruralness of this county and what we like about this county. Well, in 1994, we increased, that commission board increased the lot size from one-half acre to a whole acre. Didn't slow anything down. In 2003, we increased from one acre to two acres. It really didn't slow anything down. And if we'd increased it even further, then you or some of the people out here might not have been able to move here to say, I moved there because I wanted a real feeling. So, you know, it's kind of hard to say. You've got to be beholden to who's here. But you also got to realize that this could have been stopped years ago, and some of us may not even be here.
Yeah, but I mean, if we were talking about speculation, I mean, I thought we talked about, you know, fact, so.
Well, it is fact. If we went from a half acre to an acre, and we went from an acre to two acres, then we didn't stop growth.
That is 100% speculation. If somebody would not be able to.
I'm looking at the numbers.
That somebody would be.
No, I'm just saying, but we didn't stop growth. So it's still growing.
Where do you live, Bobby?
Me? I live on one acre. You're not supposed to be able to talk.
We got 320. I'm not supposed to be able to talk.
Not in this city.
Comments from the board? Is there a motion?
I will make the motion that we approve this as presented and that we drop the two acres outside of the place. Drop the foundation and the plan of addition of the two acres outside of the place.
That's for the 67.68 acres and the 314.
Right. And I would also like the SEC to have these studies coming forward.
Need a motion for each application?
Yes.
To be able to say so?
Yes.
That motion included both applications?
No, we have to do each. We should do separate.
So your motion is for the first 67.68 acres?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second that motion. Always a better. Is there a motion for the 314.55 acres?
I will make the same motion that we approve this as presented and to drop the two acres outside of the place.
We have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second that as well. Motion and second. All those opposed. Motion carries. Then that time, we're going to the same resolution. Ching, government's sentence. Please be quiet. Don't be loud this time. Be quiet. Talk to you after. And that time, we're going to the same resolution of acceptance and commitment. The recreational trails program.
We hope. We remember you.
Time for change. And the Lord, during October 2021, approved a significant grant application of recreational trails program. They've been granted from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources to additional pedestrian trails. The county was notified recently that the grant is successful and has been invited to proceed to the grant's second level application.
We have a lecture coming up.
Art of that.
Hey, please, please be quiet.
Could you shut those doors? A part of that application process, we just went forward to approve the resolution to accept and admit to the grant. In summary, the $70,000 grant is funded 70% of $49,000 from the state and 30% from the county, which means $1,000,000. It is clear to develop about 4,000 additional linear feet of dirt trail on the south side of the park with associated drainage, a ground trailhead, a security gate, informational kiosk, and directional signage. The expected timeframe to begin construction is summer of 2022 and to be completed by fall. Therefore, these funds will be placed in the next year's budget. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. We approve this trail and the acceptance of the recreational trail program grant.
Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
And I do have a question. Randy, for the trail, and I see that it's going to be on the backside, which would go toward where Mr. Lottam is going to talk about putting on a basement tower. Is that where we're talking about this trail being?
Yes.
Who actually is going to help, so to speak? Are we going to have our prison inmates do it? Or are we going to, who are we going to actually have do this, right?
We're going to have county staff like market, make sure the trail is, you know, actually market. And then we're going to have a private company with multi-machines actually clear the trail. And then our own crews will come back, you know, put dirt in, pipes in, associated drainage, drainage, that kind of thing. So it's going to be a combination of county employees, private contractors, to spend that $70,000.
How wide is the trail going to be?
Just like the current ones now, you know, about 10, 20 feet wide of the trail. And maybe the actual trail is set by the 8, 10 feet.
So it's going to be a real, good size and a good trail?
Yes, yes.
Because I know it's going to be real dirty walking around back there.
This is going to be permanent trail. It's going to be dirt and gravel with pops for drainage. It's not going to be asphalt. It's not going to be all gravel. It's going to be gravel here and there and drainage structures.
We need wetlands that we have to go over?
No. We've already taken to the wetlands with the Army Corps of Engineers. So these are, this grants for those trails and the trailhead.
And the trailhead is off of Central Church?
Yes.
When we get done with that trail, when we get done with this trail, how many miles of trail will we have?
Probably three and a half.
Three and a half. Well, that'd be good.
That's what we're shooting for. That's what we're shooting for. This grant that the county received, 38 counties and cities that had application, only 13 were awarded. So we were one of 13 among 38 highly competitive brands. Yes. So I think this is a very exciting project.
Very exciting. We have a motion and a second. All those better? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is consideration of construction manager for the courthouse parcel renovation phase one. Mr. County Manager.
The architect Alex Perez was supposed to be here tonight to present this. It gets sick. So I'll do it in his place. Currently, the county picked two DNR architects to design various components of the courthouse renovation project. Those components being replacing the roof of the entire building, replacing the store windows on the third portion, repairing the front balcony, the side camels, cleaning and painting all exterior surfaces, and repairing interior courtroom balcony areas, and investigating various ventilation issues, just to make the courthouse just a little bit better. And replacing the entire HVAC system. The design of this renovation project is about 90% complete. Phase one's budget is like $3.4 million. 1.4 roughly is coming from SPOSS 2019, everything but the HVAC system. And a little over $2 million is coming from federal HRP funds for the HVAC system. So during January 4th, commission meeting of this year, the board discussed and approved to move forward with engaging a construction manager to prepare a guaranteed maximum price and construct the project. We believe that will be the best delivery method for this type of project that does a lot of different things in one day. So an ARQ was prepared and distributed in January, soliciting for a construction manager on the deadline date of February the 11th. The county received three responses, River City Contracting, Freeman Associates, Thayer Break Construction. Personal interviews were held during February 22nd with all three firms. And the selection committee consisted of myself, two representatives from two DNR architects, a representative Peach Engineering who's doing the HVAC systems, and a representative from the county's facility maintenance department. After the personal interviews, review of fees, and the ranking process, the selection committee is recommending River City Contracting be awarded this particular project. Once selected, River City Contracting will repair a GMP for the entire project and the board will consider that amount at a subsequent commission meeting and work it again. The estimated schedule would have, would be to have the GMP approved during the month of April, contract preparation during May, construction begins in June, and completion later this year, if everything goes well. But with any construction project, it's dossier right now. So a motion or vote is needed to award the project to River City Contracting so they can come back with the GMP and the board can approve that to see how much this project's going to cost. But it's estimated cost right at $3.4 million. And you can see in your GMP package, the 2WR letter of recommendation of River City Contracting. And you can see River City's contracting and their fees that they will charge. And these, and you can see in their award letter or the consideration letter, River City Contracting, their estimated amount is right at a quarter million dollars in their services. And that is the lowest of the other two. So based on their interviews, based on the fee schedule, based on the presentations and the references, we're recommending River City Contracting to proceed forward with this project.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy?
Was the construction manager's fee the same percentage with all three?
No, they're all different.
And this one, was this the lowest?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions?
I'll make the motion that we go with River City Contracting based on the information we have just received from county managers with the courthouse parcel renovation phase one.
We have got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second. I'll second that.
All right. We got a motion and a second.
The only question I have is, Randy, are we going to have a, the words cake, a program of working with the people in the courthouse of how we're going to work around the H fact and all that? But I know we can't kick the court system out.
Oh, it's good.
Yeah, it's good. Thank you, Bobby.
That was one of the most important questions at the interview process. The question was posed of all three, how are you going, the courthouse will be open. It will remain open during construction. And how is the contractor going to communicate with all the users and the citizens that go in there and make sure there's no surprises, make sure everybody's prepared for what's going on? And maybe the possible movement of court facilities for a very short period of time, a day or two or three, you know, to the record center perhaps. Yes, that was all discussed. And everybody has a good game plan, how to communicate with the department heads in that building. And communication is key. We don't want any, there will be upset people. There will be phone calls. There will be noise. There will be dust. There will be over. We're going to try to keep it to a minimum, but at least your bullets come.
Thank you.
You may not recall, but what was the range of these? You can just tell me next time.
I can answer that one way. But River City was the lowest of the fees, if I can remember correctly. They were pretty tight, but River City was lower. But again, River City was picked not only for fees, but for their presentation, their experience, and their knowledge of small projects. This is a small renovation project compared to other projects that are being worked on right now. Not big, huge mammoth, you know, 10 billion dollar school systems with new construction. Wiggled River City better fits what we're trying to accomplish, a renovation of a small project.
Well, all three of these are excellent companies.
They were all excellent.
Glad to see that we got this quality of interest in the project.
Very much so. And in subsequent projects, you know, phase two, and three, and four, and phase one, we hope to have that consistent construction manager onboard with us. So that is, they told us, now this company goes through all phases with us until that courthouse is completely renovated, as planned to become available.
We had a motion and a second. All those and bigger? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening, project effects and our county manager, Paul Stewart.
Mr. Chairman, working with you, we have a program work highlights number four. The Unified Development Council has been posted on website for several weeks now in its final form for public review. The first reading of the planning commission will be March the 16th and the board reading of this commission on April the 5th. And let's see where it goes from there. Number six, the EMS volunteer fire department facility at the northwest Harris Business Park. That design is ongoing. We've had design meetings on January the 28th and February 24th. So that project is ongoing. And everybody's involved with us. Everybody's about to make a specific decision. So the end users will be very happy with the end result. Number nine, replace the prison roof. The contractor started this week. So hopefully that process will be finished in the next 30 to 45 minutes. Number 13, patch various covered roads using T-Splus funds. That is on bid, bid opening goes in March the 3rd and more consideration in March 15th. Number 18, Elsie Park. We're developing phase two, and you'll see phase two of a budget that's coming up really soon. Budget started today, March 1st. So we are officially in budget season. Number 24, phase five of the Meadowport Trail. That is on, that went out for bid this week and the bid opening is March the 30th with more consideration April the 5th. And if everything goes well, phase five of the Meadowport Trail from the Calaway Country Store to a little bit past of Hamilton should be finished by late November, about Thanksgiving time. Again, that's another exciting project. Number 43, green dry water lines. They already started installation. That should be finished very soon. Number 44, phase one of the renovation courthouse. We just, the board just hired a CM at risk. And the CM, the construction manager, should have a GMP, a guaranteed maximum price in April for the board to consider. Number 47, impact feed study. The board discussed this at their trip in February 24th and the advisory meeting. They will hold a meeting on March 23rd. meeting, they will hold a meeting on March twenty-third, Wednesday, March twenty-third at five o'clock at the library, is when the advisory meeting of the impact fees will meet. The fee, the impact fees, as well as the impact, impact fee ordinance.
When was that viewed, Randy?
Wednesday, March twenty-third, five o'clock at the library. And that impact fee, all information about the impact fee is on our website front page for public review. Number fifty-two, um, the T S plus, the upcoming T S plus referendum set for May twenty-fourth. Um, there's some information on the county's website about the upcoming T S plus referendum. Again, the T S plus referendum to continue that one percent sales tax, um, is a ten year sales tax, it was approved nine years ago, it expires this December, and so, um, the region, the River Valley region is asking the voters to continue that T S plus for another ten years. So, we know that it's successful, a lot of information is on the website for public review.
Do you know what the, uh, other counties in the River Valley, uh, R B R C, they don't say that way, do you? What they're doing to get the word out to the, their population? I mean, I'm just curious.
Through, through chambers and Columbus is taking a big step, they have a lot more resources, they're taking a big step in advertising and publicizing the May twenty-fourth referendum. Otherwise, the smaller counties and the smaller communities not doing too much. Is there anything that we can maybe take, uh, from them and just kind of distribute the, the R B R C for this area, or no? Is it, you know, cost, let them have one head count, that's, you know, prior issue of cost. But our responsibility as a county is to educate, not advocate or spend funds. What, um, that's our website. So, the basic information's on the website, what we did with twenty twelve, uh, T S plus funds, uh, how we spent those funds, and how we're going to spend the new funds if the referendum is approved on May twenty-fourth. And advance voting begins in early May, so the election season is right around four. It'll be here before you know it.
Did you talk to the chamber about what they're doing?
Yes. Social media?
Off links?
No.
And I, and so we talked to them about the, you know, she said that they were going to go into, um, organizations such as Rotary Club and that's one, but I have not seen anything have social media, that's what I was.
But they said that before they get to the Rotary Club, they're five or six weeks out. They were five, six weeks out of them going out and talking to anybody.
And early voting starts?
Early May.
Which is about eight weeks out.
Well, I wonder, but you're saying with that, okay.
So, the upcoming T S plus refer, referendum to continue, this is not a new tax, it's a continuation of the same one percent. The county gets about a hundred thousand dollars above in T S plus, and we use it for resurfacing the roads, uh, the Meadowport Trail, um, it's, it's, uh, matching money for our helmet, state allocation.
Well, I mean, based on the projects we have listed here, you know, around about at three fifteen, two nineteen, go block, the three fifteen improvement from Art Drive to Hampton Mulberry Grove, you know, we would, it would greatly benefit us to have the T S plus to fix some of the issues that we feel like are coming.
Yes.
Or may already be here.
These funds are greatly needed. So, again, the T S plus referendum marks the, May, May the twenty-fourth, May the twenty-fourth, advance voting in early May. Um, that's really important to look at. Just moving right along, interestingly, on page eleven, the single family home building permit, the, in the month of February, there were forty-two permits issued from community development, forty-two for the month of February, so, so far this fiscal year, we're at one hundred and seventy-six. So, we should, I would project it would surpass last year's level. So, again, that's the, that's the program work report, if you happen to answer any questions, the board may have. So, is there a, is that wrong, another train again, we're saying for the whole term now? Yes. But, but like everybody said, nothing as compared to two thousand four, five, and six. Here's a case, great question, then. Everybody wants to go here. Bottom line.
I know that the government works have had to go out and fix and patch several roads that have been washed out because of the rain that we've had, and, and, you know, I'm asking you, and you may not know either, but do we know, do they generally go out and look at all of our county roads to see which roads we might need to start looking at, because one of the roads that they just fixed today, it's been out, it's been out for a couple of days, they fixed it today, they did a good job doing it, and did it very quickly, but, you know, it's kind of concerning that the rain's starting to wash out some of our roads that you wouldn't think would be issues or problems.
I can actually take the side as much, rather. I know that they are always on the road, and they're always looking, and they're always making lists about problems, but on the recent rainouts, um, they were so busy fixing roads that they really weren't out looking for what else washed out. So, we did ask that, that it, say that it was helpful for the public to report when there's a road that's got washed out, but they may not ever write down. For instance, the one in my district was, um, Ridgeway where they put the, I said Ridgeway, or how many, they put the new bridge in, and there's that dirt piece that the state didn't finish paving, and that washed completely out. So, um, when I called him, he was like, well, thank you, because we didn't, we haven't been down that road yet, so they do need the public to continue to request for those services.
That's like, the road they fixed today, I go down, I drive that road every day at least twice, and, um, when it got washed out, it's kind of a surprise, but it's a pretty good road, but.
We had six inches of rain in one day.
That's right, they said so much rain, and, uh, but I will say, you know, they got to it when they were able to, and they did a good job fixing it, I'm just curious about that, but I know they're, they're doing the best they can do, you can't stop God and the rain.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't know if you guys were either critical or if you were, uh, or any, but during that time, and, you know, there was some, uh, allegations going back and forth, you know, kind of derogatory, really bad derogatory remarks about our road department, and by Mr. Brown himself, and, you know, I just want to go on record that, you know, I think, I speak for all of us, that we really appreciate everything and the work they do, and, you know, all the, um, you know, strain that these guys are under, and that just even count, I love that part, and, and there was a, there was some, some really bad derogatory remarks, we watched on that, and I can't go into what was exactly said, but it's, these guys go through a lot, and they catch a lot of it, I will say that.
So, this is the water department?
Yes.
Have a solid voice, yeah, just a little bit.
Yep.
Any other questions for Randy this evening? Um, the next item on our agenda this evening is for our county manager and his, uh, certain ways around an agreement with Mercer Medical. How many of those heard you said?
Don't give him information.
He said his information, I'm not sure.
Um, thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Uh, before y'all is a lease for the old library property. You may recall that the board previously approved the N O U that contemplated this. Um, the funding obviously was raised, y'all, y'all seen the work done out there, I think they even have a sign up. Uh, this lease matches the terms contemplated in the N O U and is for five years, um, with an escalation on the price each year for the county, with the opportunity to renew for two additional five-year terms, with the county having the ability to terminate it at any time for any reason with, uh, one year notice. And so, this is for the board's consideration, a motion or vote is needed to approve the execution of this lease.
Well, I'll make the motion that we, uh, execute this agreement between Mercer Medical and the lease of the old county library building. I know that it's something we've been wanting to happen, and I know it's coming very soon to open, so, uh, I'll make the motion that we approve it.
Now, in a second, that motion. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
And all those opposed?
Motion carries. The next item this evening is also, uh, rest in bridge, um, termination agreement with the Board of Education.
Thank you, Chairman. Before, may recall that in two thousand fourteen, it entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the school district for fifty years for, uh, the Waverly Hall School property. The idea was the county would be able to use it for recreational purposes, or at least a segment of it, whereas the county or the school district retained ownership of the property with the intent to build a school on a different portion of it at some time in the future. Since the execution of the I G A, the county has never used it for recreational purposes, nor has the school district moved on any efforts to build a school, and has now decided it's in the best interest of the school district to sell that property, and therefore is asking to terminate that intergovernmental agreement that provided the county use of the property. The school board's attorney drafted this, I reviewed, um, this, uh, would require a motion or vote of the board to execute this termination of that intergovernmental agreement.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to terminate the I G A with school board of the property, whether or not.
I'll second. We have a motion in a second, and all those opposed? Motion carries. And, uh, we do have to leave for executive session, you know, real estate decision, so I'll make a motion for executive session, is there a second?
Second, I do want executive.
All those opposed? Is there a motion, a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We got a motion and a second, all those opposed?